We'll call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of July 10th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not as our motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll move to tab four, the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there are the canvassing results for the recent election. Mr. Kessel or Mr. Coling, do you have any introductory remarks to make there?
Thank you, President Johnson. You have before you the preliminary, the June 12th preliminary election results, which of course did include several city commission seats. Those results are stated there for you. For Commission President Dennis Johnson ran unopposed and received 2,549 votes. We did have three commissioners running for two different city commission seats. And Carson Steiner and Gene Jackson received the most votes of the three. And then we had the unexpired two-year term that was also voted on. And Shirley Dukart ran unopposed for that position. So if you'd like to accept these results as they've been presented, it would take a motion of the commission to do so.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Well, at this time, then, Mr. Frenzel, I think we'll say goodbye to you once again. And thank you for
A pleasure.
... your service to the city. Many, many years of service. You've been a great commissioner. And I think, I think we have some parting gifts for you. Do we, Mr. Kessel?
We serve indeed, Mr. Frenzel. We have something for you. It's not quite the western wear that you're fond of, but it does say "Western Edge" on the coat. So I hope that it keeps you warm at night instead of all the time you spend here at City Hall. I hope you enjoy the, it's got your city commission years of service and of course our logo on it. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I noticed it's extra large. When you started, a medium would have fit, you know. And Commissioner Dukart, I think now's when you come back to the table.
Did you get your 101?
And Mr. Kessel, do you administer the oath of office to each of us?
President Johnson, I would love to do that. I think we can do it just sitting here, if you all would mind.
Let me pass these out. Mr. Steiner and Mr. Dukart.
Now, when you administer these with the police officers, they have to remember what I say. So I see you're cheating. If you could raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
Shirley Dukart.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Commissioner
Of the office of City Commissioner.
In the city of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota
In the city of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I hereby further solemnly swear
I hereby further solemnly swear.
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To appoint or hire any person
To appoint or hire any person.
To any position with the city of Dickinson, North Dakota.
To any position with the city of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Congratulations. And welcome to the city commission.
All right. So we can sign these and pass them back to you?
Please.
The next item, then, is the appointment to various committee assignments. And I noticed in studying this list earlier today that we don't have a convention and visitors bureau on there. And Commissioner Altman, you are working with that group, are you not?
Correct.
So we should add that to this list. Is there anything else, any other committees, that you as commissioners are on, actively working with, that we don't have on this list? Okay. There is one change I would like to suggest, and that is on the Stark County Planning and Zoning Board. Rather than Mrs. Dukart, I would suggest Mr. Altman's. Not necessarily because I think Mr. Altman's will do a better job than Mrs. Dukart. But given the ages of most of the commissioners and the importance of that position, since he's our youngest commissioner, I would suggest that he take Mr. Frenzel's spot on there. Would be my suggestion, if that would be agreeable to the entire commission.
If I do that, then I would like to switch that for my community action board membership.
Would that be okay with you, Mrs. Dukart, if you took the community action board and he took the planning and zoning board for Stark County?
I guess that's fine. I'd rather been on the planning and zoning, but that's okay.
Well, I understand that, and your background is great for that. But I think trying to look towards the future, because there's a, you know, a good chance that both Mr. Jackson and you would leave that board at relatively the same time. Where I, I'm not announcing that Mr. Altman's going to run for reelection, but I suspect that that's something he might do down the road. Would there be any other changes that any of you would like to suggest? Well, with the changes that we mentioned involving the community action board and the Stark County planning and zoning, those changes, would there be a motion to approve these committee assignments?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukart?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll go back to the item I missed, item C, the election of a vice president. Currently, Mr. Jackson serves in that capacity. Chair would open it up to nominations right now.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I nominate Gene Jackson.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Are there other nominations? There are no other nominations, then I'll declare that nominations are closed. We have the motion and the second to elect Gene Jackson the vice president. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukart?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. There you go. Okay. That brings us to item E, Patterson Height Apartments, CB, CDBG sponsorship. And Mr. Kessel, you're going to introduce that item.
Thank you, President Johnson and commission. Tonight, before you, you have a request by the Patterson Height Apartments or Beyond Shelter. They have received CDBG or Community Development Block grant funds. And in order to access those funds, they need a local public agency to act as a pass-through, excuse me, act as a pass-through. We have done exactly that in the past. We have, in fact, done exactly that for Beyond Shelter in the past. So it is my recommendation that the, the city act as the pass-through agency for CDBG funds that were awarded to the Patterson Height apartment complex. In the, for full disclosure, later on in the agenda, we'll be talking about these apartments again as units that possibly could house city and/or county staff. So I just wanted to mention that now, and we'll talk later about that.
Okay. And what's the resolution number for this one?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 32-2012.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard the introduction by Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions regarding this item? Not, would there be a motion regarding Resolution 32?
I'll make a motion to, for Resolution 32.
Okay, we have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Dukart?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item F, which is the Cook Meadow Hills annexation. Mr. Coling, that's Resolution, which number then?
It's Resolution 33, then, 2012.
Thirty-three. And Mr. Kriton, are you introducing this item?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, fellow commissioners, this is an annexation request for the remainder of Cook Meadow Hills, which is approximately 108 acres. And it also includes a large tract immediately to the south that is owned by Arthur and Rose Sickler, which is approximately 20 acres as well, consisting of a total of 128 acres. The annexation location, I have a color map attached with your packet, but it's also described as east of State Road, south of 34th Street Southwest, and north of 21st Street West. City staff recommend approval. The Art and Rose Sickler piece located immediately to the south is included in order to avoid an island effect or a incorporated portion located within city boundaries. That has been our policy in the past with respect to annexations. And if we do not include that piece, then that piece will be a remnant that will be difficult to include with further annexations. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kriton. Are there any comments or questions regarding this item? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding this, this issue? Okay, there's no one from the public. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 33?
Mr. President?
Mr.?
Please approve Resolution Number 33-2012.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, maybe I'll bring up one question for staff here. Have we had conversations yet with the county about road maintenance and improvements?
Currently, we have not addressed that issue of road maintenance.
I'm trying to think if we've had other annexations that would be similar to this, and I don't think we have so far. We've actually crossed section lines, I think, in the past. So here, we'd have a situation that we probably need to have that conversation, I suppose.
Yes, we will be working with them, for sure.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay. I did ask for the motion, didn't I? Okay. Anything else? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Move to item G, and that's the city administrators' reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. The first item on the list is a housing shortage for law enforcement workforce. The city has looked at several different options when it comes to trying to solve the housing crisis, not only in the broader sense, but certainly for city employees as well. As the commission's well aware, we purchased two homes several years ago and have utilized those two homes for staff housing for, since purchase. You recently authorized the purchase of six FEMA trailers. Those units are actively being placed and should be available as early as Monday of next week. So we are looking forward to incorporating those into the possibilities when it comes to staff housing. In addition, the state has come up with a, another grant program. It's housed out of the Attorney General's office, or at least was initiated there. The North Dakota Housing staff will actually be the, they're working together to make sure that this program is applied uniformly throughout the state of North Dakota. It is called the Law Enforcement Housing Pilot Program. And we've been in discussions with Stark County, because this program allows up to a maximum of four housing units per political entity to be applied for, and they provide a grant of up to $105,000, I believe it is, per unit, assuming a construction cost of $160,000. So rather than, I mean, one of our options was to build these units on our own, which we still could, but in, one of the options instead is to have a developer or a builder build these, own them, and then dedicate those units to this program, and then they receive those funds. Beyond Shelter and Mr. Madler have been willing to do exactly that. They did submit a grant on behalf of the city of Dickinson and Stark County. It was due on Friday of last week. So we have submitted for four units, both for the city of Dickinson and four additional units for Stark County. If we're awarded those eight units, Patterson Place would be the place where those staff would be housed. Now, we did try, we had several conversations with North Dakota Housing related to the fact that if a police officer, and they must be occupied by a licensed police officer. If they are not, they then will be made available to the public. We did contact North Dakota Housing and tried to get a reservation, so to speak, or at least priority given to other city staff, and were unsuccessful in that bid. So if we are successful in getting these grants, we'll have an additional four units, at least initially, of housing for law enforcement staff. We are currently six staff members down in the police department, and housing is a part of the equation that will help us hire those staff. And I have had several conversations with county commissioners related to that, and they are on board with this path or this action. So this is informative for you, and I'd like to answer any questions that you may have Okay?
I have one question.
Oh, sure.
So we don't anticipate any problem with police officer, I, and C, is what you're saying?
Certainly not initially, Commissioner Steiner. You know, one of the things that we've considered is all of the other homes that we utilize now, the two homes and the six FEMA units are all transitional in nature. We allow staff to stay six months and a one-time extension of three additional months, and then they have to find the housing elsewhere. That way, it allows us to revolve that inventory. One of the things we are considering, if awarded this grant, is allowing police officers to stay longer or until they're fully employed and would leave employ with the city of Dickinson, since we weren't able to obtain that priority.
Have you also discussed with them, say, we have officers that do not want to stay there, so we have openings, talk about dispatch, we have dispatchers that need, I think we discussed a little bit of that.
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Steiner. And that is one that we, of course, tried to get them to recognize as a law enforcement official. They are not recognizing that in what they call Round One. These are limited resources. There's $3 million in grant funds available statewide. If they do not allocate the full $3 million in the first round, they will then do a second round, and they will open it up to additional job classifications that are related to law enforcement. This could be beneficial for the city, because you mentioned dispatchers, and that would be exactly what our intentions would be. And for the county, they're very interested in having jailers stay in homes or in residences of this variety.
We can think of more needs. I mean, fire department, firefighters, about anybody that the city employs possibly use the place to stay.
I should also mention that if, if a law enforcement, if one of our police officers is in the residence, leaves our employ or buys a home and vacates that residence, and someone from the public then moves in there, because we don't have another officer behind, as soon as the, another unit becomes available, if we have an officer who we recently hired or is in need of housing, we can then place them back. They obtain that priority again. So we don't lose priority when it comes to law enforcement. You know, we're not going to progressively lose those four units, assuming we get them over the course of time. They're guaranteed for a timeframe of 20 years.
How long can an occupant stay or reserve that?
That is up to us. We can make that determination of our own accord as a city commission. I kind of briefly mentioned earlier that we do six to nine months now, but are considering allowing that to be a much longer term, because we're worried about losing that priority. There's no further questions, then. The, the next item is the Regional Oil and Natural Gas Symposium. President Johnson and I were asked to attend a symposium held in Dodge City, Kansas, at their request. They are experiencing or on the cusp of experiencing a oil boom of their variety. And so they wanted to learn a little bit about what to expect, maybe some best practices that we could share. And I would think that it was, it was quite successful. We heard a lot of positive comments from the participants of that symposium. And I will say that when we were asked to do this symposium, they were expecting about 100 people. That was the number they gave us to expect. And when they heard President Johnson was coming, all of a sudden, that number was 350 by the time we got there. So, good job, President Johnson.
You must be asking for a raise later.
Would you like me to stop there or continue? The next item?
No. If you want to, you know, praise me a little more, go right ahead. Is that what you meant?
I don't think I've signed your oath of office yet.
No, we've got time. You can keep going.
Okay.
Why don't you skip the staffing plan, though, because we'll do that after we get through the timetable agendas. We're not going to get through all your items.
Okay. The next item, then, skipping number three, is the Elks Landscaping Update. As was reported in the Dickinson Press, there was been a change to the expectation regarding the landscaping surrounding the Elks Building. When that plan was submitted to the city, it did not include lighting of any variety. We did then add lighting to that plan, which, of course, changed the underground and the plan itself. So it added expenses, probably to the tune of $20,000 or more, and it added time, because you had to now work with another outside agency to make sure that those, electrical was, was brought to the sites and to those locations. The rest of the landscaping plan, I believe, is finished. The only thing left is the lighting. And so we have an agreement with Mr. Brinkman that he would have completed all landscaping at the end of June. And since we've added lighting component to this, it is my recommendation that we extend that to July 14th. Knowing full well that the, the actual lights themselves are not likely to be installed by the 14th, these are special ordered lights and will take some time to actually manufacture and get on site. So those will not be there on the 14th, but everything else should be done by then. And I'll gladly answer any questions that, that may have queried. And do we need formal motion? Attorney Coling tells me we don't need a formal motion to grant that extension. Moving on to our last item, then, under this portion of the agenda, is a liquor license update. We have had a request to add an on and off sale liquor license. And if you recall, we did change our ordinance in the not-too-distant past to deal with situations just like this. We have, we limit our on and off sale liquor licenses, and there's a provision that allows the city commission to add licenses based on a population figure. So, Mr. Coling, could you provide an update of that ordinance?
All right, Ken. Thank you. Mr. Kessel, the ordinance, as it is written now, provides for a total of 16 on-off sale licenses within the city limits of the city of Dickinson, and then provides that, once the city reaches an estimated population of 18,000, that you as a commission have the discretion to choose, to add an on-off sale license. That 18,000 number, that estimate of population, is something that you can make in any manner that is reasonable, rational to you. It doesn't require a census or any sort of official action, official count. It's just an estimate that you would make reasonably as a city commission as to what the population is. The ordinance does not require you to issue an additional on-off sale license, but gives you the option to do so. And if you would choose to add an additional license, the procedure that we've outlined in ordinance provides for that license to be auctioned off. Parties that are interested in acquiring that license would submit a sealed bid. We'd have a date for opening of those bids, and then conduct an auction of all interested parties, that they would be able to bid the purchase price of that license as they desired. That fee goes to the city, and then the winner, the high bidder, they will pay the regular license fee for an on-off sale license. We happy to answer any questions you might have.
Had we set a minimum on that bid?
You have not in ordinance. You have the ability to do so if you, if you choose to do so, though.
Mr. Coling, who is Coburn's? Is that Walburn or Cashway?
I believe it's Cashway.
The new grocery store.
Correct.
Other comments or questions?
Is there a certain time from when they buy the license that has to be put in place and utilized?
There is in ordinance, the business that acquires the license has to be open and operational within a year.
One year from either transfer or purchase?
From the date of issuance, yeah.
Do you have to advertise that that license is going to be available? This is Bernie Marsh on the Esquire Club downtown. Is it advertised, then, if that is going to be another license issued? Would that be advertised so that other people, other than the people that have approached you, would have that opportunity? you, would have that opportunity?
Yes, the ordinance provides that the notice of bid would have to be published at least 15 days prior to the bid opening.
Just because one person's requested it doesn't mean that, you know, they get the license. They'd have to bid on it against one or more bidders, just like anybody else. You know, I think there are a couple of questions here for us to think about. Mr. Coling said, once we reach 18,000 people, you know, we could create a new license and auction it off. So, one of the questions is, do we want to do that? I think we're clearly 18,000 people. The other thing is, we're probably clearly 21,000 people. If you do one, do you want to do two? And I think that's something for you to think about. Now, this is under reports, so we're not going to take any action here tonight, but if you have some strong feelings about this one way or the other and can give Mr. Kessel some direction, I think that's what he's looking for right now.
I am, President Johnson, and I have another question based on your comments. If you do want to do two, would you like to do them independent of one another or simply allow the top two bidders to receive a license? In other words, consecutively or concurrently?
I would imagine we could fashion an advertisement that says something to the effect of two, two, I would suppose.
Yeah, and Mr. Coling, could we, if we had a, if we decided to do two and, you know, we eventually have an auction and you have a high bid and it quits, can you give then, can we sell the second one at no less than the same price that we would be selling the first one at? In other words, whoever the second bidder is, they would have the option of taking the second license at the same price as the high bid.
Mr. President, you could do so and we could fashion a bid process and advertisement to provide for that. That is a matter of your discretion. If that's the way you want to go, we can accomplish that.
Well, if we didn't do that, there wouldn't be much incentive to be the high bidder. The incentive would be the second bid.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
One of the things that concerns me is when you mentioned two licenses, you know, I could support something like that. If we can somehow, and this is just for thought here, I look at the family-owned businesses that are representing the liquor industry here, and we lost one of them already by the sale of their liquor license to Walmart. And I know the free enterprise route and so on, but eventually, now you've got Cashwise coming in, if we only approve one, you know, we're talking about a major corporation again. How do we protect the family-owned liquor store people? Can we create an additional license that can only be purchased? Because it's going to be unfair bidding when you've got a corporation against a family that wants to start a liquor store. You know, if there's some way that we can come up with some guidelines, if we're going to create two, create one in the major corporation and one in the family-owned business. And I don't have any ideas on it, but I think that is something that, I think we can all agree that, you know, we look at these families that have been in the town for a long, long time and so on, and seeing a family-owned business out there is what, you know, Dickinson started many years ago. And now the big corporations are coming in. Anyway, just a thought, if anybody's got any ideas, if all that could be done.
Commissioner Coling, I have one other question on the Walmart license. What was the data transfer on that one? Do we know?
I don't recall. I believe it was August 2011.
Okay.
So, approximately 11 months.
And if they don't have theirs in place by the one-year deadline, then what happens with that license? Does it revert back to the city or what happens?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to take a look at that and get back to you if I can.
Because that muddies the water a bit, too, when you're looking at one license or two and within a month, could we possibly have three licenses that are floating out there?
Attorney Coling, and this may be a response to Commissioner Steiner as well. As Commissioner Steiner mentioned, we've had one license already revert to essentially what would be an off sale if Walmart does open on time and such. I believe that's the exact nature of what Cashwise would like to do, assuming they're a high bidder, is they would also open an off sale and not an on sale. Does the commission have the ability to require that a license be utilized as an on-sale license as well?
Our current ordinances don't provide for that. The current ordinance states that it's an on-off sale license and it can be used in either fashion or both, but there's nothing in our current ordinances that would require or allow the commission to require that an on-off sale license be used in a particular way.
Could it be utilized as a point of decision-making when it comes to awarding, not just high bidder, but all the other qualifications they have to meet? Could that be an additional?
The current ordinances that we have provide that it's a straight auction, that the license is offered, forced to the high bidder.
Okay, well, we'll come back to this item. We're past 5:00 p.m. and we do have several timetable, agenda items, so we'll hold this discussion until later in the meeting. We have a public hearing scheduled for 5:00 o'clock. We'll declare that public hearing open regarding a utility easement vacation and we'll ask Mr. Kurtan to introduce it. And then, if there's someone from the public that would like to speak, they can do so after his introduction.
President Johnson, I'll take that one. We did receive a request for a utility easement vacation on lots 1, 2, 11, and 12 of Block 3 in the Houston's Third subdivision. The request was made on behalf of a player's bar and grill that is planning to be built on those lot lines. And all utility companies have reviewed their request and have signed off on the vacation. And we are therefore recommending approval of the vacation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. You've heard his introduction. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding this issue, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Coling, is this Resolution 34?
That's correct, 34-2012.
Would there be a motion regarding 34-2012?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 34 for the utility easement vacation of Houston's Third Edition.
Second. And we have the second. We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We have a 505 timetable, agenda item, and we have Mr. Scott Pickett here to discuss future residential growth scenarios. Mr. Pickett has appeared before us a number of times, so welcome back.
Thank you, President, members of the commission. Three items were handed out prior to the meeting. There was a sheet with a small table on the top. There was a series of maps, the three future residential growth scenarios represented by map. And also, there was a, I think, four-page document on preliminary commercial industrial What I would, what we'd like to achieve today is the city commission's authorization to proceed with the three future residential growth scenarios because we need to move forward and do our modeling. I'd like to emphasize that, once you choose the three scenarios, you're kind of stuck with them. I mean, we don't have the time to actually change them around, so we've spent a lot of time, you know, we had a special meeting with the city commission, planning commission, and we subsequently met with staff to refine these scenarios. So, just like to note that if you do approve these scenarios, those will be the three and only three scenarios that are modeled. And that table, the one-page table, actually is a summary of the scenarios in terms of the demand or the expected development versus the forecasted demand for residential development. And you can see each of the three scenarios are in columns. The first row is the 10-year period. The second row is the entire planning period. And the third row is the entire planning period, but excluding the annexations shown on the maps that are beyond 10 years, all expressed in expected development in excess of forecasted demand for residential development.
So, you're not asking us to choose between scenario A, B, or C? You're asking for approval of all three?
Correct. Yeah, our contract with the city calls to model up to three future growth scenarios. So, yeah, we're not asking you to choose one of them just to, you know, authorize us to move forward to model the three.
Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Pickett, I know we don't have a map shown for the public. Would you mind just quickly discussing the differences between the A, B, and C scenarios in terms of the map?
Certainly. Actually, they're quite minor. Scenario A excludes from the urban service boundary, so that's forecasted development beyond year 10, West Dix A and B and Schnagle North. Scenario B excludes West Dix B, Roar's West B, which is the furthest 160 of Roar's, and Schnagle North. And Scenario C excludes West Dix A, West Dix B, Roar's West B, and Schnagle North. So, the variation is really, it's, the differences are in a combination of West Dix and Roar's West B. They're very relatively minor differences.
If I could add to Scenario B, West Dix C and West Dix D are included in the scenario?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
So, you need a motion to accept these three scenarios?
Or whatever procedure you'd like, just give us a nod that you're good with them and then we can proceed to model them.
Okay, well, first of all, I'll ask if any commissioners would care to change or suggest any changes to A, B, or C.
Mr. President, I don't have any changes to suggest, but I've got a couple of things I'd like to discuss. If you want to do that now or...
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
I'd like to understand the process and future use. When you said, "Once we do this, we're locked in," I think you were referring to the comprehensive plan.
In terms of modeling.
Modeling for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and, yes.
And I understand that. I understand that you need a decision to go ahead with the completion of your work, which is the comprehensive plan. Maybe Mr. Kurtan, Mr. Coling can jump in here, but once that comprehensive plan is complete and these three scenarios are included in that comprehensive plan, what does it mean to us going forward? What does it mean to us, once we've accepted the final comprehensive plan? Does that comprehensive plan become part of ordinance? Okay, and does that suggest that we're going to need to change an ordinance? Should we need to change these lines in the future? Can you talk about that a little bit, somebody?
Sure, Commissioner Jackson, I can do that. You know, when the comprehensive plan is approved, that will be your, that's your strategic document for the next 20 years. It's a policy and goals document. You'll use that as part of decision-making purposes. It will be adopted as part of an ordinance. We have stated that we are not going to automatically rezone properties. If it's zoned today, we're going to leave it that way, but the comprehensive plan, the future land use that you're looking at there, will be used for rezoning purposes, will be used for designating where the urban service boundaries will be, which will be very strategic for developers. They'll know that areas within our urban service boundary, as a community, we are trying to provide urban services, sewer water, urban roads, within a 10-year period. And as part of the funding mechanism for that, we'll have a capital improvement plan in order to provide, in order to provide the projects in order to include that. So, will this be used as a day-to-day document? For me, it will be, and many of the department heads and you as decision-makers as well.
Okay, so, three years from now, we look back and we say, you know, we misjudged this, we need to make a change. How do we do that?
We'll go through a, to change a designation on the map, either through a rezone or the future land use designation, you go through a comp plan amendment, similar to a rezone, same process that we would go through.
Okay.
My suggestion would be, instead of having, having it as we have now for rezones where they could be done on a monthly basis, the comprehensive plan is your long-term document in which a lot of other documents that are included within it are all based on, that we would look at it strategically and look at it maybe once or twice a year. Where I have been, we would, let's say, if you had three or four people that wanted to annex outside of our boundaries, wanted to change some of the classifications, we would establish a docket procedure in which we would combine all the applications and then, once a year, maybe in June, in December, we would holistically review them all. Staff would provide you with recommendations and we could look at it all together at one motion, at one meeting, and determine the impacts with one of them or collectively.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. That is completely up to you. Some communities could allow it on a month-to-month basis, similar to rezones. I would suggest that you would do that on a semi-annual basis in order to really thoroughly analyze anything that's been changed, because we've spent, you know, we spent, by the time this is done, well over a year, year and a half, and this is a document that has a lot of foundation to it. So, we want to make sure that if we do adjust it, we've done the methodology and we've done the research with respect to that.
And I agree, and I think that this is an example of why we're going to end up with a good comprehensive plan, I think. But I did want to make sure that we all understand what Mr. Pickett meant when he said locked in.
Locked in would just, we're talking about doing the impacts.
Yeah.
As part of their thing would be determining water, sewage, transportation, the impacts, where they would be located, and then attaching cost figures with the different scenarios so you could ultimately decide which scenario out of the three or modifications thereof that you would like to ultimately adopt.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to discuss, just briefly, this sheet, Mr. Pickett, talks about the, in excess of expected demand.
Mm-hmm.
Expected demand, remind me, now, I respect, expected demand matches that population projection of 40-some thousand?
No, not, that's not quite right. The expected demand is the summation of all the dwelling units from annexations that have been, there's been discussions with the city on annexations. There are infill developments within the city limits that have yet to be built out, like, for instance, Diamond Acres. And also, we've portioned a relatively minor number of dwelling units, just strictly infill development, from existing vacant residential lots. So, the summation of all those units... So the summation of all those units is what we're calling the expected development. And the difference, and the excess is actually, relates to the housing forecast. The city has yet to actually bless a population projection, but you have blessed a housing unit projection. So those, so that's the demand, the expected demand is essentially the housing unit projections. So this table shows all three of the scenarios, that the expected demand, that some of the annexations, infill developments, and infill lots being developed are in excess of the housing unit forecasts.
Okay, I'm not sure that I'm with that.
Mr. Jackson, if I could maybe try to muddy up the waters a little bit more. The excess demand is, we had our discussions with the combined meeting, the joint meeting, which we had here in June, and we talked about if we included all these annexations that were proposed. The way that they stand, the way that they would stand is that we would have more land use allocation than the market is telling us that we're planning for. So the excess demand, in essence, is we are factoring in extra housing units with respect to the annexations that we're showing as part of our urban service area. If you wanted to make it exact of what we were proposing, you know, based upon NDSU's numbers, we would have to, we would have to constrain some of those boundaries. And we chose not to do that. We chose a general figure of trying to get it between 1,000 and 1,500, extra demand based upon the future annexations in our current city boundary. So, and so that's where that extra demand is coming in.
We don't really have extra demand. We have excess supply under this plan.
Correct. Correct, yes.
Yes.
And that's if and only if everything that has been brought before the commission is built and sold and occupied. So there's a lot of ifs on that as well.
Right, right. And I think that as a community, you know, you want to be very conservative. Our numbers are very conservative with respect to that. Also, you want to have extra. You want to lean forward, because the more, you know, that, we're going to constrain the market somewhat by our, by our normal regulations, but allow, we're allowing a reasonable fudge factor so that we're not going to, you know, adversely impact the land use allocation and the cost of land. So we're actually providing more than what is needed, and I think that's a good, fair way of doing it.
It still allows us to be nimble and proactive and even reactive to whatever the population demands are going to be.
Absolutely. And if I could just add another point, that this is, this is for 20 years. We're going to be looking at it on an annual basis, in every five years, doing a significant amendment to it and monitoring. Essentially, the first five years, we'll look at it and say, okay, we're 25% through our comp plan. How are we doing on our land use allocation? If we have exceeded 75% of our single-family already in the first five years, we'll come back and go, well, based upon what we anticipate, I think we need to do some modifications and add more residential land in order to accommodate that development if we want to continually provide for, you know, more infrastructure for that. So we have ways of monitoring. This is not something that's fixed in stone. It's just that as part of our modeling for the comprehensive plan to give you the data that you need to make, you know, informed decisions, we're just looking at scenarios to give you. You know, there are three different scenarios based upon different annexations and land and where we see natural infill, in order to perform that data so that you can make some informed decisions as we move forward with it.
I'd like to also add that the goal would be to, once the three scenarios are modeled and the impacts are identified and the costs, associated costs are identified, that one scenario, either a modification of one of these scenarios or one of the scenarios, be selected as the future land use map. It's be awful difficult to plan if you actually have multiple future land use maps. So the goal would be to have one.
That was kind of what was my next question. My question was going to be, why would we not err on the side of choosing scenario A, since it's our largest excess of expected demand? Are we talking about more cost if we go with scenario A, even though we wouldn't develop it unless it was needed in stages?
Given the differences in these three scenarios, I don't anticipate seeing a huge difference in impacts, because again, we're talking about two annexations, you know, deciding on which tracks in two annexations are included. But it was still, we still need the data. I mean, there will be real impacts, and this commission, you know, needs to know that moving forward.
Right. There isn't much difference between scenario A and B, 220 households, house units, but to the A and C, we're looking at 600.
Right. Keep in mind, in relative terms, the, we're talking about, in scenario A, a 10-year expected development of 11,000 units. In scenario B, again, 11,000, is a little less. And in scenario C, 10-year, 10,600. Those are the absolute numbers. This is, this small table just compares the aggregate supply, as we call it, versus the demand. So they all call for a significant number of dwelling units.
And our whole goal with this is to not build streets that lead to nowhere and have the market dry up and be left with, we've put the infrastructure in, we've spent the money, and we overbuilt, and now we have subdivisions that are never going to be developed. That's what we're trying to avoid with the whole comprehensive plan.
And that's my whole point in the discussion. You brought population figures to us. I realize we're still waiting for NDSU for those final numbers, for their work. But the population numbers you brought to us, how do those numbers fit this sheet?
We'd have to assign a, in proportion, in proportion. If you just roughly.
Do those numbers, but do those numbers fit the expected demand? Or do they fit the expected demand plus the excess?
You could just multiply all those numbers roughly by 2.5, and the relative differences would not, would not change. It'd just be, instead of housing units, it would be people.
President Johnson, if I may, to Commissioner Steiner's comment about why not choose A over B, or B over C, or whatever. You've been given, granted, it probably feels like a lot of information when it comes to how to build out the city, so to speak, but it still remains very limited. You don't have the numbers in terms of the cost of each of those. And I'm sure, you know, you're aware of, because of the ground itself and what currently occupies that ground, there's going to be influences. And in scenario B, for instance, that includes the West Industrial Park, and it includes an established housing development. So that certainly brings to it certain dynamics that aren't in scenario A or potentially scenario C, because they contain less built-out structures or developments as they are today. So my only point being, there's a whole lot of things that will influence your decision in the end, not just housing or the cost of extending infrastructure to them, to those And Mr. Pickett, I think it deserves attention. These scenarios are essentially all based on housing demands, and relatively little impact has been given to commercial or industrial. Could you speak to that maybe alone?
Yes. That is the other handout, the preliminary commercial industrial forecasts. And we, as Mr. Kessel has astutely pointed out, we've only been talking about housing units to date. And we need to also forecast commercial industrial development over a shorter period of time, just 10 years, because it's very difficult to plan even a few years out. And so we've, this report just shows three different means to try to calculate what the forecasted demand for, for commercial industrial space is. Highlighted on the second page is establishing a relationship of commercial and industrial land to existing and forecasted housing units. So it's a relationship of housing units to shops and warehouses and so forth. And then the scenario on page three, on the bottom, looks at, we were able to get permanent employment projections from NDSU during the planning period. So we took those, those jobs and translated that into land area for both commercial and industrial. And so this is just, we're in the process of actually formulating this. The end result will be establishing a range of land area that's, that's expected to meet demand, assuming the existing relationship between residential and commercial development and residential and industrial development remains the same moving forward. And then we'll then apply a building coverage factor to it to get square footage of commercial, forecasted, square footage of commercial and industrial space. And then we need to place it on the map and place it in a timeframe, three, five, or 10 years, because that, again, is important inputs to the model. A large commercial shopping facility will create a significant number of trips, which will be identified in the transportation model. So we, we're working with Mr. Corton and hope to finalize that process. Our measurements of demand are relatively low, and then there's a significant amount of commercial, vacant commercial and industrial land in the city now, and so we need to kind of factor that and then somewhat account for that and get the net demand. And then we'll have a range of acreage for, for future commercial industrial development, and then go through that process of square footage and locating on the map and assigning a timeframe. We hope to have that completed hopefully by next Friday, because we need that to do the modeling. Even if you do authorize these three residential scenarios, we still need to do the commercial and industrial scenarios or forecasts.
You're not asking us for any action on the industrial-commercial property?
No.
You're just informing us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I don't see why we can't accept these three scenarios, A, B, and C, as the scenarios that they use for their modeling. That's all you're asking for us to do.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we got to keep in mind that we're, we're planning here regarding oil impact and an oil boom, and essentially, we're planning for the unpredictable. So none, none of these numbers are absolutely right. If they were absolutely right, we would just be plain lucky. And, and so what Mr. Corton said about constantly reviewing, continually reviewing your comprehensive plan, whether it's semi-annually or annually, and a major review every five years, that's the key. You have to look at that, your present situation relative to your plan and what you think is going to happen from that point forward and adjust your plans. But, you know, for us to assume that we're 600 units too many or 600 units too few right now, it's a good discussion, but we really don't know, because you can't, I mean, NDSU's a great institution, but I doubt that they've got their housing forecast right down to the, you know, to the unit, its forecast. So why don't we go ahead and act and approve these three scenarios, and we can move along here?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion or further questions? All right, now we'll vote, and then Mr. Oldman.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner.
Hi.
Mr. Stuckard.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Is there more you wanted?
That's all. We just plan to, the next week and a half, work with Mr. Corton, finalize the, the commercial industrial forecast. I can just simply tell you that there's ample commercial industrial land. So there's not an issue there. It's just trying to predict how much and where and when. And we're going to be working with the developers that are active in the community and try to do our best to read that crystal ball.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next timetable agenda item is to hear from Mr. Ben Shoyer regarding the Badlands activity update, and so, welcome.
Thank you, President Johnson, members of the commission. Again, thank you for giving me the time to come tonight and update you guys and the community on the operations at the Badlands Activity Center. We've completed another fiscal year, the end of June of this, this past month, so just got a little update on that and kind of some things as we move forward and, you know, just keep everybody in the loop on what's going on. So last year, we ended the fiscal year, which was fiscal year 2011, with 170 different events throughout the facility. And proud to say that the end of this past fiscal year, we almost doubled that amount and ended the year at 320 different events through the facility. So it's a very busy place. It's being used by the community. It's been used across the state by different entities and organizations and even from people, you know, I've got some people coming up from Texas the end of this week that's going to have a couple seminars in the facility and things. So, you know, we're one of the places here in the facility that's a great place to have an event for people that are looking for space. So break down the numbers, within that 320 total amount, we had 40 different sporting events at the facility, which included football games, track meets, variety of events through the Dickinson Park and Recreation District, and we had a couple sport camps there as well. So, and then we had 25 different university events, which was functions within Dickinson State University. These included socials. We had a few fundraisers with the foundation, some ceremonies and some meetings as well there that was, you know, university-oriented events. And then obviously, the broad range of our events does come from the community. Those numbers are about 255. And that includes everything from wedding receptions to employee training. We've had oil companies coming in, training their employees, you know, any, any type of party, from a holiday party to a birthday party to an anniversary party. We've had socials in there. Obviously, our outdoor movie nights, which I'll speak a little bit more here in a few minutes. Those are one of our key attractions over the summer, and, you know, we've had some vendor shows and things like that. So just kind of a broad range of events and things that we can offer in the facility. So some of our six key aspects of what we can offer, we have a lot of, not quite a lot anymore, if we got 320 different events in there in a year out of 365 days. But open date availability, usually we're pretty flexible on dates and being able to accommodate people throughout the day and on the evenings, including the weekends. We offer a clean, attractive, modern facility, plenty of parking, so there's no issues with any, you know, seminar coming in and not having enough room for people to park. Reasonable rates. We like to say that we have helpful accommodating staff, and we offer first-class service. So that's kind of some of the things that we try to market for our facility and sell toward our customers and what we can offer them and provide. So next update was, would be on our operating budget. Again, we finished the year out in the black. Our, our budget toward the end of June, which was last month, was right around $50,561, around there. So continue to operate in the black, and that was even a full year's worth of salary. I know the year before, there was a gap there that we didn't have a events coordinator in place. So, you know, we've got through a year that we've had a full, real, true cycle of, you know, expenses and the salary and different things. So it's good to see that we could finish up the year there and ahead and be able to move into the new fiscal year and continue operations. So a couple updates on facility enhancements. Obviously, our parking lot's been resurfaced and striped. That was completed toward the middle of May. It's been great that cars are not three, parking three deep now or four deep for track meets and things like that. So it's been nice that we have the lines down, some more coordination. We also added a second line. We also added a second line. This is kind of track and field oriented for our, you know, when we run a track meet, we added a second line on the back stretch of the track. That way, we can run two cameras during a track meet, which is kind of a selling point if we do try to bid for the state track meet in the future. It's kind of required to be able to have multiple cameras set up during a track meet to obviously be able to time the meet and events. And you can change direction of the races according to wind and things like that. So we were able to add that enhancement and, you know, have that available for the home teams and the teams outside the community that's renting the facility for a track meet. So we also was able to install some conduits upstairs in our TV camera room, which is going to allow TV stations to come in and do some live broadcasting in the future. So, you know, moving into the Frontier Conference and things like that, we're looking to kind of upgrade some of that service that we can do. And that was beneficial to BEK Sports when they were in over the June with the Badlands Bowl, having that conduit in, you know, just cleans up cabling and things like that. So we were able to get that in, and that's helped the facility out a lot as well. So next pointer, I just wanted to kind of outline our upcoming football schedule for this fall. We've got 21 games scheduled starting the middle of August. Obviously, we've already had one game, which I'm kind of included in this year's schedule, which was the Badlands Bowl in June. North Dakota didn't quite come out on top on that game, but it was competitive to the end. And we had a good attendance at that game. The weather was great. So everybody seemed to have a good time with the Badlands Bowl. But anyway, 21 games this fall. Each home team here in town will have five home games, which is one more than they had last year, you know, obviously because of the rotating schedule. So Dickinson State will have five home games, Trinity High will have five, and Dickinson High School was planned to have five home games at the Badlands Activity Center. We also have our nine-man high school jamboree back this fall as well. That'll be four games on Saturday, August the 25th. And I actually didn't bring that schedule with me, but some of the teams coming in from that are partial. We got Mont Regent, Shiloh Christian from Bismarck, and a few other schools from around the community. So once that schedule's set, we'll have that out and be able to distribute that throughout the community so people can put that on their schedules to attend on that day. So that kind of outlines our football schedule. Still trying to finalize some start times. And like I said, once that's all finalized, hopefully within the next week or two, we can start distributing that so people can, you know, mark their calendars and plan to attend a football game or two this fall. And also our outdoor movie nights, like I said, we do those in the summer. We already had one in June, and our attendance was about 140 people. And that was after it rained all day. And then it just happens that night, the sun came out and there was no wind. So it was beautiful night. I think that deterred some people because they thought we were going to cancel with the bad weather. But we did have it. Our next one's scheduled for a week, four weeks from this Thursday, which is July 19th, again at 7:30. And we're going to show Journey to this mysterious island. So it's kind of a family-oriented movie, and that'll start at 7:30 on July 19th. So inviting the community to come out and enjoy, you know, enjoy Fisher Field and the facility and, you know, get that outdoor movie night feel. So and then finally, if anyone wants more information on the facility, what they can do to rent, we're having an event there. We do have a website and a Facebook page. So just log on, get online, and, you know, you can always Google the facility. And we got, you know, you can go through the university. We've got links out there. So feel free to, you know, for people to check us out and see what we can offer and what we got available. So that's my update.
Thank you, Ms. Shoyer. Are there any questions? Well, it's really great to hear that you're holding that many events that it doubled year over year. That's...
Yeah. Of course, that's, you know, like I said, that's paid events from year to year.
And that you're operating in the black. That's good news. So it's a great facility for this community in this region. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move along to the next set of items. We have three rezoned petitions. These will all be public hearings. We'll have Mr. Cortan introduce them, and then I'll open the public hearings. And Mr. Coling will tell us what the ordinance numbers are. So, Mr. Cortan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item is the I-94 Industrial Park, a second edition rezone. This is from Ag to limited industrial for property situated to the east of I-94 Industrial Park and Exit 64 in Section 6. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Okay. And Mr. Coling, this ordinance number...
Mr. President, this is ordinance 1472.
Okay. So at this time, we'll declare a public hearing open for 1472. Anyone who wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? No one from the public, so we'll close that hearing and ask if there are any comments from city commissioners.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve first reading of 1472.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oldman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Midor Meadows Rezone. This is a rezone petition from Ag to community commercial and high-density residential, or R3, for property situated to the west of State Avenue and at the terminus of 15th Street West. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Okay. Thank you. 1473, then?
Correct.
So we'll declare the public hearing open for 1473. Anybody who wishes to comment may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any comments by city commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding the first reading for 1473?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Oldman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Next item, Mr. President, is a Lamont first edition rezone. This is a rezone petition from community commercial to medium-density residential for the property situated to the east of Sim Street and to the south of 16th Street East. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cortan. This is 1474. Public hearing is now open. Anyone who wishes to comment regarding ordinance 1474 may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any comments by city commissioners?
Will we approve first reading of 1474?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Oldman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a, on the agenda is a special use permit. This is for Painted Canyon Estates. This is a special use permit to allow duplexes in a residential, single-family zone. The lots included are Blocks 1 and 2, Lots 1 through 5 of both of the blocks. The site is located to the west of 22nd Avenue East and to the east of, or to the west of 22nd Avenue East in Painted Canyon Estates. City staff and planning commission recommend approval. There are two attached conditions with the revised resolution that would reference the two building elevations that were submitted for the approval of that, and city staff would recommend approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be refraining from voting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stuckert. Normally, there is no special hearing with a special use permit, is there?
Mr. President, the public hearing for a special use permit is held at the planning and zoning level. That hearing was held at planning and zoning, and no public hearing is required at this time.
Okay. But if we can ask for public comment, I mean, we're not...
You're not restricted from doing that, no.
Okay. Well, I know there's a lot of people here, so I don't know which items they're here for, but I'll just ask, is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding this special use permit? If so, you can come to the podium, and we'll hear your comments. So any comments or questions by city commissioners regarding this special use permit? This is the duplex?
That is correct.
Well, is there a motion regarding this special use permit? If there are no other comments?
Mr. President, move to approve special use permit.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Other discussion? All right, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Oldman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert is abstaining. The chair will vote aye. The motion carries. Okay. We'll go back. That completes the timetable agenda. We're going to go back to Mr. Kessel's reports. We were discussing a liquor license update. And so certainly invite you to continue with your comments and your questions. Remember, he's kind of looking for some guidance on where to go with this. Okay. How about we do this? We tell him to prepare an agenda item where we'll consider issuing one additional liquor license following the provisions in our ordinance, which would mean that if we go ahead and accept that, we would establish then a bidding process. If we do one and we feel that there's a good demand and good reason to have another, we can always do another shortly thereafter. But I think we have sufficient population myself that would justify two more. So I think we certainly have enough to justify one more. What do you think?
I think we're fine.
Yeah, I think it's fine, too. You know, and we had the previous discussion a year ago or a year and a half ago, whenever that was. I think we're going to see interest from a wide array of entities. I think there'll be individuals. I think there will be corporate concerns. I think there'll be a lot in between. So we're going to...
I have a question. If we made a motion to approve two, do we have to sell both of them, or can we just hold one?
Mr. Coling can answer that question for you. But I don't, as I recall from the ordinance, if we go through the bid process and we're not happy with the price, we don't have to accept the bid.
That's correct, Mr. President. If you're not happy with the price, you don't have to, to accept that bid. Anyone who would be a successful bidder on this would still have to go through a background investigation, as all liquor license holders do. So if a background investigation came back negative, that would give you cause to refrain from issuing a license, too. So maybe the fact of having a license auction doesn't necessarily commit you to issuing the license.
Okay. I think our population qualifies us for two right away, but we don't necessarily have to.
No. And I mean, we could stay where we're at, too, the number that we have. What do you think? Is that a plan?
Yeah, I would do one to begin with.
I'll certainly pursue it in that fashion, then. Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Okay. And then you have a staffing plan that you want to talk about.
Yes, and I have, thank you, President Johnson. I have handed out a revised version of the one that you received electronically. It should have been on your desks. The only difference on the front is some highlighting on the bottom of that page. So if you all have that, I'll just spend a few minutes. I'll try to not take a lot of time. What this, the gist of this document is to gather some information together to kind of show you, give you an update of where we're at mid-year when it comes to staffing in the city of Dickinson. You're all aware of the influxes of population and commerce into our community, and it is made for a very favorable job-seekers environment. Wage inflation is something that we are up against regularly. And the dynamic nature of our economy has made that wage inflation rise even quicker than we anticipated. So, and this isn't occurring just in Dickinson, of course. This is occurring in all of the 17 counties that produce oil in North Dakota. I think Dickinson and the other oil hub cities probably feel a special affinity for that exacerbation of wage inflation, simply because of the nature of our communities. We do provide the majority of the services. I think a lot of people like to live in communities where they have options when it comes to retail, to medical services, recreation, and things of that variety. So certainly, some of the smaller cities are having similar impacts as we are. The city of Dickinson has spent literally millions of dollars on our quality of life. We heard an update tonight from the BHC on one of those buildings that contributes to quality of life. Obviously, the West River Community Center, the library, our museum, and a multitude of others are also physical structures or manifestations of what that quality of life has entailed and statements to the public on how much we do appreciate quality of life here in our city and in our county. Getting more specifically back to labor, the unemployment rate for Stark County has hovered around 1.6% for an extended period of time, according to North Dakota Job Service. It's gone up to 2%, but it tends to hover in that range for a long time. Full employment is defined differently by different people, but oftentimes, 4% or even 3% is used as full employment. And we are half of that if you're using the 4% figure. I wanted to mention that mining and logging employment is up 106.8% from 2010 to 2011 in Stark County. Job Service uses the county data. We can't drill it down all the time for city data, but we can get it consistently for county data. This is, this contributes to that job-seekers environment that I spoke to earlier. Construction employment is up almost 11%. Professional services and business services up 23%. Trade, which includes wholesale and retail, is up almost 26%. Transportation and utilities up almost 30%. On and on and on. Real estate, almost 40%. So there's a lot of people seeking employees in Stark County. I did find some information related to wages in Stark County in 2011. First of all, for private businesses in Stark County, the average wage was about $50,000, a little over, almost 50 and a half. And for government, specifically in that same timeframe, it was about $31,000 a year, or almost 40% less. And the increase from 2010 to 2011 was dramatic. In the private sector, it went up 15.1%. And in the public center, specifically to local government, it was 5.5. Now, local government is not just the city of Dickinson. That does include other entities such as school boards, park boards, and the like. So a significant difference. When I started to compare the city of Dickinson to other oil hub cities or other like entities such as Stark County or our local division of North Dakota DOT, some things came to light that I wanted to share with you. And I just called out a few of our job descriptions, such as police officer, building inspector, firefighter, street operator, kind of the backbone of the community in a lot of respects. And I don't, I don't mean to not mention other job descriptions because there's certainly not an exclusive list here. But when I did so, I listed our wage and then the wages of the other entities that I had available to us. And you can see, when you compiled this number, the closest we were is in building inspectors. And our building inspectors, on average, receive 12.5% less when compared to the other communities that were included in the calculations. That's a pretty significant number. So in order to get similar or competitive with that, it would mean changing some things on a grand scale. And I do have some recommendations for, on how to do that. But before I get into those, I just wanted to mention one other item. We did, for the first time that I'm aware of, we surveyed our staff. And we surveyed... And we surveyed them in basically five areas: job satisfaction, working condition, personal opportunities, cooperation, and compensation and benefits. And I don't want to take all your time and go over all those things, but I do want to point out maybe two or three specific questions that I did involve, or did include in the report. The first one is, during the last six months, have you seriously considered leaving for another employee? Twenty-two people answered that question strongly agree, and 31% answered that agree. So 53 respondents answered that they have strongly, or that they have agreed that they've looked for another job in six months. Fifty-three staff members represents probably a little over a third of our current workforce. The only one that I'll mention due to time is the one that says, "I'm currently satisfied with our current pay structure." Fifty-one said disagree, and 26 said strongly disagree. So 77 disagreed that our pay structure is satisfactory to them. I'm not going to go over some of the reasons why turnover impacts smaller organizations more than larger. You can read that for yourselves. But I did want to mention that the average, I provided a document to this body about a year ago that included some statistics. And I wanted to replicate some of those statistics for you, just in terms of giving you an update. The first one was average applicants per advertisement. When I gave this to you, there was a noticeable decline between '09, '10, and '11. We went from an average applicant list of 21 in '09 to 18 in '10, and a drop to 13 in '11. Why, I hate to say that that drop has been precipitous, and it's actually a cliff now. We have, we averaged four applicants in 2012. We've had 24 different advertisements in 2012, from January to June, and our average applicants per ad is four. I would love to be able to give you a measure of quality of those applicants as well, but I can't, because our ordinance says if there's less than seven, that we don't even score them. Normally, we would score those applicants so that they would make, achieve the list to be interviewed. And you can see by this number of four, we interview everybody that applies at this point in time, because our ordinance requires it of us. So it's been a struggle. It's been a real struggle, in some departments worse than others. And I did point out some of those averages per department, so you can see for yourself where it's been a more difficult struggle than others. So what strategies can we use to make sure that we do have adequate staffing, that we don't have to impact our services, that we don't have to do further cutbacks like we did in solid waste, where we no longer offer time on Saturday to drop off materials at the Baylor Building? I think, first of all, a cost-of-living adjustment, and maybe, you know, maybe that's not the right title. Maybe it should be a market living adjustment. I'm not sure. But I do think that because it is pervasive that all of our employees, to get at least close to market, should probably get an increase. Other hub cities such as Williston did a 10% across-the-board increase last year. I spoke to their auditor. He is budgeting for another 10% across-the-board increase in 2013. I did speak with the local North Dakota DOT director, and they've done almost 20% increases in the last year in oil-impacted areas. They do an add-on that they don't do in other parts of the state that's included in that base wage. So my first recommendation was that we do a COLA increase across the board of 7%. I would further recommend that the members of the executive team who did not participate in the mid-year increase that this body graciously provided last year, that they also get an increase of 9%. If we don't at least allow them to follow, it creates compression. And so if we didn't include them this year, we would have compression happen again. I'd also like to recommend that we add some staff mid-year. If you did authorize the hiring of this staff, we would immediately go to the advertising process and hope to have them hired by September or October. And the positions that I would like to recommend are two in solid waste, two solid waste operators. The first one would work in the landfill primarily, and the second one would work in collections. We have added a great number of sites to our collection list, so much so that we're going to probably have to add another route to our system in order to get everything done on a regular basis. You'll see a capital improvement through the 2013 budget process. That's likely to ask for a vehicle to staff that route. But if we can get somebody hired and then trained, if we can get that vehicle immediately in January, we would, we would add that route as soon as possible. In the landfill side, we have had to hire outside contractors to do some daily cover and some other things that our staffs just simply can't get to. We spent over $100,000 in the last two years, 2011 and 2012, to get those operations complete. By having another landfill, solid waste operator, we may be able to avoid those expenses, or at least some of those expenses, so that we don't have to hire outside assistants to get jobs, to keep us in compliance essentially with the North Dakota Department of Health standards. The other position that I would recommend that we add would be a fire inspector. You are well aware of the amount of building permits that the city of Dickinson has issued. In April, we led all other cities in that category. And we have augmented our building permit staff. We've added a planner. We hope to add a planner next week, have one start. But this also impacts our fire department in two ways. Number one, they're involved in that plan review, but when that building is complete, they're also now involved in the inspection of those structures, especially on the industrial and commercial side. So it kind of hits them twice, so to speak, both on the planning side and on the completion side. And then, skill-based pay. This is something that we added as a way to compensate a skill set that we knew was competitive in the marketplace. In other words, if our staff had a skill set such as a CDL license, they were very sought after in the, in the private sector. In fact, we continue to have some of our staff being offered jobs as they're working their routes in the community. So using and expanding a skill-based pay, I think, is important. Now, with, in today's environment, I'm not sure "skill-based" is the accurate terminology as well. It might be market-based pay, simply because our staff, as everybody else's, is very important to us, but it's also important to others. And they wouldn't blink an eye to hire some of our staff away from us. And we certainly don't want that to, to happen. So you'll notice that the recommendation is to create a third class of skill-based pay. We currently have two, one at 75 cents, which predominantly our dispatchers get, and one at 175, which is predominantly to our public works operators. So the recommendation would be to establish a third, and then to broaden the use to beyond just the few skill-based job description we use today. So what is that going to cost, and how much, what kind of revenue streams do we have? I know that's weighing heavy on you. First of all, the anticipation in terms of revenue, on fee-based revenue, is we could add $276,000 in solid waste fees, or not, excuse me, not add, collect based on the current fee structure by the end of the year. In the building permit side, we would be, if our current rates continue, we'll be at $270,000 in excessive, or excessive revenue over expenses. We have the state grant funds. They provide us with a million dollars if our base wage, or excuse me, the amount of base occupation exceeds 10% in the mining industry. Ours has, and so we qualify for that million dollars. Now, we have allocated some of those dollars in 2012, some of that to one-time expenses. So for 2012, that's not going to help us, but in 2013, it could, depending upon how the commission chose to apply those funds. There's other revenue that I've not mentioned in the report specifically, other than in the table at the back that I added, and that's state aid. State aid is a, is based on sales tax collections that the state makes. We, 4/10 of 1% is redistributed to cities. At the end of the year, we're looking at about half a million dollars of unanticipated revenue based on state aid and sales tax collections. Based on a report by the state tax department, in 2011, the increase in total data, or total sales and purchases, went up in one year, $3 billion from 2010 to 2011. And they're on a similar pace yet this year. So those collections, I don't anticipate will go down in 2013 either. So essentially, what you have before you, oh, and I'm sorry, the other revenue that could be used is, it's kind of got two, two degrees to it. The first one is, we budget for an 8% transfer of administration fees to the general fund. Currently, we're capping that at what's budgeted, that 8%. Soon as we hit what's budgeted, we're no longer transferring funds to the, to the general fund. If we simply made the policy decision to continue to transfer 8% of collections beyond what's budgeted, and based that on year-to-date collections, that we would see an increase of approximately $100,000 by year-end. That admin fee, by state law, we're allowed to collect up to 20%. We're only collecting 8. Now, I'd be careful about adding any large increases or even smaller increases, simply because we've got some, some capital expenditures, specifically in the public works building and in the wastewater treatment plant or water reclamation facility that we need to pay for. So I'd be real hesitant to transfer a whole lot of dollars beyond that, that 8%.
Yeah, we would just be taking money from one pocket and leaving a hole in the other, because in your, in those, in those enterprise funds, they have such huge capital expenditure staring at them that, you know, you, it's not really money that's available to you. You just, you'll be underfunding your capital expenditures.
Correct. I fully endorse that. I'm not suggesting a change from eight to 10 or 12.
What you have here on an annualized basis with these recommendations is, if I understand this right, $735,000 in expenses above and beyond what we budgeted.
That would be correct. That's the estimate.
Yeah, I, I think one of the pieces of information that, that, you know, we need to know is, what is the current forecasted general fund surplus or deficit for 2012? We had budgeted a deficit for 2012. Well, I suspect we're running ahead on revenues in general, probably running behind on expenses in general. And, you know, if you looked into your crystal ball and said, okay, let's, let's do a forecast for revenues, balance of the year, and expenses, balance of the year, do, do we indeed have that same deficit, or will we operate without a deficit, or will it be a surplus?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I, and I think, you know, you should bring that to us as soon as you can.
Finance Director Johnson and I have talked, and you'll have that information at the next commission meeting.
Great.
I have a question. How many employees have we lost in the last year? I know it's been a significant amount.
We've done 24 hiring processes this year. Now, that doesn't necessarily equate to how many we've lost. It's not a one-for-one. But that'll at least give you a round figure. That should be fairly close. It is a number I can get specifically for you at our next meeting.
And I do want to comment, I have not had any, anybody in the public that has complained about our employees anywhere. Maybe getting tickets, but that's about it. You're doing your job.
Well, I'm very, very glad to hear that. They're working under stressful situations in almost every single one of them, so I'm very glad to hear that their public persona is, is strong.
What kind of action are you looking for tonight, John? Or is this information purposes only?
Yep. Commissioner Altman, I just want you to digest, at the next commission meeting, and I'm hoping that you'll have a recommendation or at least an endorsement of all or pieces of this plan.
I'm, I'm interested in the use of the fees to do some of this. You know, the fees are really a direct result of the impact that's causing the needs for the staff. But I know that a lot of that money is spoken for already, too. So in the same vein that the president talked about, I'd like to get a better sense for where that is for 2012 specifically, because I think that's a good use for that money.
I think besides just the general fund, you have two primary enterprise funds that you could project out to the end of the year and tell us where you think your cash balances are going to be relative to where we thought we would be when we developed the 2012 plan. So you've got, you know, the solid waste enterprise fund and the water fund. And I don't know if there's been any adjustments in terms of capital expenditures, you know, relative to what we budgeted. But if you took your recommendations, and for example, you've recommended two additional employees to the solid waste fund, where would, where do we stand at the end of the year if we go ahead and do that?
We'll certainly compile that information as well, bring that to you.
The other, you know, the other factor, and it's, it's an unknown for us, but the legislature goes into session next year. We have to lobby hard for increased financial support, whether it's that program that now generates a million dollars a year for us. I mean, we could easily use several times that amount, plus then the funds that are used for capital expenditures.
That occupational one you mentioned is, is very nice because of its flexibility. It's not as restricted as, in terms of the grants, which are also, of course, very nice, but they're very project-specific, where that million dollars can be used for capital or operations.
Mr. President, I seriously believe that compensation, this compensation plan has been moved to the top of the list for us. If you look back at just the last two to three years with city employees ranging from the police department, our staff here, waste facilities, staff and so on, we've lost key individuals that had many, many years of experience. Police officers, again, like I said, we've lost people with 20, 25, 30 years of experience that have left us, so literally hundreds of years of experience. We're relatively young city staff here. I think the police chief mentioned the amount of officers that have less than five years of experience and so on. We need to grow the longevity of our staff as a priority. And, you know, when we say we're losing them to the oil field and so on, I believe we are. But there's some employees that can't go to work in the oil field. I can't go to work in the oil field. Mr. Johnson probably can't go to the oil field. There's a number of us that just can't say, well, I'm going to go to the oil field. But when you look at our salaries here, that we have somewhere individuals here, I think we really need to address those, to keep those employees here to where they can get the longevity and the experience that's going to make our city a much better-run community. So, you know, again, I think this is one of our priorities that we do have to take a look at.
I have to agree. And I don't think you even have backups, like, for example, Rita's the only one that can give out specials. That holds up closings because we can't get specials if she's got a day off. And that affects a lot of people, especially with the building we've got going on here, too. So we want to have, if we want to run a nice ship here with managed growth, we So we want to have, if we want to run a nice ship here with managed growth, we better start increasing our, either the salaries or the people here that are employed.
I want you to, you know, keep some things in mind. I mean, this is all important, but when you say put it to the top of the list, we have a number of items that are at the top of the list, whether it's wastewater treatment facility, or it's new positions, or it's the condition of our streets, the amount we pay people. I mean, they're all at the top of the list. The problem is, we have more things at the top of the list than you actually have money for right now. The other thing I'd point out is, we have an issue with our pension plans. Okay? Our pension plans have been underfunded for some time, and the city is funding our plans at a pretty hefty dollar amount each year. Now, when you go and increase salaries, you also are increasing your pension liability. And I think, you know, there are some things we should talk about. For example, when the state increased its salaries this past biennium, they also required greater contribution of the state employees to the pension plans. I think, you know, you have to consider that. We have a situation that's a little different, though, from the state, because we have a plan that is now frozen. You know, if you're hired after April of 2006, you're not in that pension plan. So if we're going to do something here and take into account what it's doing to our pension liabilities, then we have to also think about those employees who are not part of that pension plan, who are part of what is comparable to a 401K plan in the private sector. So, I mean, yes, this is an issue, but you have a lot of issues to deal with. And we have more issues than money.
And I'm glad you brought up the pension side, President Johnson. We are looking into that. That is data we'll also provide you at the next commission meeting, what the implications would be.
Are there other points you'd like to make about this document?
I wish I had more time to put the finishing touches on it. I presented it to you. I'm not proud of some of the details and the way it flowed, but I think I got my point across, I hope, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. I think it's, it is an important issue, and it is one I hope that you will act on at the next commission meeting. That will conclude my reports for the evening then.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Are there any questions or comments for the city administrator on any issues? Okay, we'll go to Tab 6, which is Public Works and Planning. And we have a number of items there. And Mr. Crotan, are they all, well, they're mostly all yours till we get to item E. So we'll turn it over to you and let you take us through these.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item is West Ridge First Edition subdivision. This is a final plat request. The property is located in the northwest quadrant of Exit 59 interchange. The plat consists of 32 lots totaling 208 acres. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Contingent upon the eight recommended conditions of approval to be inserted in the adopting resolution. You'll notice that a couple of these resolutions that will be coming forth, the conditions weren't attached, I didn't forward those on to Rita, so I'll take the blame tonight.
Is this Resolution 34?
President's been Resolution 35, dash 2012.
35, okay. 35, 2012. And do we need to know what those conditions are, even though they weren't?
The contingents are attached with a supplemental document that was provided for you in the dais tonight. If you prefer, I could read them into the record.
No, 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 you don't have to do that. Where are they provided to us? Got it.
And those are in order as I will further talk about them tonight.
Okay, are there any questions or comments regarding the West Ridge First Edition Resolution?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 35.
35.
With the, how do you want that worded, Mr. Crotan?
Just say contingent or including the eight conditions.
Including the eight conditions.
Yeah, I think that's sufficient. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Other discussion? All right. If there's no other discussion, then we'll vote. Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is Tweetin's Third Edition. This is a final plat request. The property is located north of 29th Street West and to the west of Highway 22. Access provided by an existing frontage road southerly of the property. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
And resolution number what?
36, dash 2012.
That's 36, okay. Oh, okay, I got it. All right, any comments or questions regarding the Tweetin's Third Edition?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 36, Tweetin's Third Edition.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Here, none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is Lion Second Subdivision. This is a final plat request. The property is located within the existing Lion subdivision. In essence, they are replating the entire subdivision. It's located to the east of Fourth Avenue East and to the south of 40th Street East. The property size is approximately 22.6 acres. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. With the supplemental document that I referred to earlier, I have four attached conditions to be inserted in the adopting resolution tonight. Mr. President?
Okay. Miss Resolution 37 then? All right, 37, dash 2012. Any questions or comments regarding this one?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 37 for Lion Second Subdivision.
And including those four written conditions here, right?
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Not will vote. Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a rezon petition. This is the second reading. There has been some changes from the first reading, namely, the conditions of approval to be inserted within it. There are four with that supplemental document. The PUD is a, is an overlay district. It will overlay, it will become the zoning destination for the Lion subdivision that I spoke about earlier. The overall project itself will consist of 25 single-family lots, 60 townhouses, and 144 multifamily dwellings. City staff and planning commission recommend approval. Mr. President?
Okay, so this is the second reading of Ordinance 1471. If there's anyone that wishes to comment regarding 1471, you may do so now. Step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is no one that wishes to comment? Any comments by city commissioners?
I make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1471.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm not sure I understood, Mr. Crotan. The ordinance that we have, does that have all the changes in it that you mentioned, or are there more changes to come?
The first reading of the ordinance, if I, and I wish I would have grabbed the document, I don't, I'm not sure if we had the four conditions of approval, and I wanted to make sure that they are forwarded from what was presented to the planning commission when we read that last meeting. So I have attached that with this document to move them forward with it. They are important conditions that I need in order to, in order to enforce the PUD and the planning unit development plan that's attached with that.
So my question, my question is, are those four things in what we read here in our notebooks?
No, that's why I added these supplementals for you.
So we would be?
Approving the, approving the second reading with the addition of the supplemental materials.
With these in this, but would this language be exactly the way it would go into the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President, that would be the language that would go into the ordinance.
Okay, so I'm not comfortable with Mrs. Dukard's motion then, because to me, it sounds like we're approving what's written here, which is different from what you're really suggesting we approve.
I guess the motion can be, if you wanted to clarify that, would be recommending approval of the second reading with the insertion of the staff's recommended four conditions that are obtained as supplemental document. If that will clarify the matter a little bit more, Mr. President?
Well, I think we're accustomed when we, you know, I'm a little more comfortable doing that with a resolution, with an ordinance. I mean, I think we're accustomed to seeing the ordinance pretty much in final form, and if we wordsmith it a little bit on the second reading, it is a little bit where we're just, you can actually, you know, delete or add some words and you see what you're voting on. Mr. Cole, I'm kind of looking your direction for, are you concerned about, do you share my concern, or?
Well, Mr. President, at your discretion, you have the option to delay second reading until the next meeting, and we can get this language inserted into the document that you have in your packets. Since you do have the information in front of you, that is the language that will be inserted here for second reading of this ordinance. So if you're so inclined, I am, I see no legal impediment to approving the ordinance with the insertion of the conditions that Mr. Crotan has outlined.
These are the four conditions under what's entitled Lion's PUD?
That's correct.
Mr. President, these are the same conditions that went through the planning commission and the applicants aware of.
Right. No, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I just, just that, the ordinance that you actually write up that we've approved doesn't differ then from what's written here.
Correct.
Okay. So, let's back up. Mrs. Dukard, when you made the motion to approve 1471, did you intend that it include these four points?
Yes, the PUD, because the first one that I approved with the four was the Lion's final plot.
Yes, that's different from what?
Right, and now we're down to the ordinance with these lots' PUD.
Okay, so that's in your motion. And Mr. Steiner, was it Mr. Steiner that seconded?
President's been through.
Mr. Olmans, okay. And so you're comfortable seconding that?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
Sorry to belabor this, but a couple of these items refer to an Exhibit A.
Hmm, yes.
Does that?
Mr. Jackson, Exhibit A was attached with the first reading. That was the, that was part of the supplemental materials that we had.
So we have Exhibit A already?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else here? So we know what we're doing? Good, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. President, is a Renaissance Zone Amendment. We had brought this to your attention, I think about a month ago. This is more than anything at this point, information purposes. This is proceeding through the amendment process per state code. We're required to go through the planning commission. It's scheduled to be on the July meeting docket, and it'll come from there subsequently to you in August. This is a change from our current Renaissance Zone, which is an economic development, redevelopment area that was established back in, back in 2004 by the city. This is an insertion of one new block, Block A and B of McDonough's addition, and the removal of Block 5 of South Dickinson addition and Block E of McDonough's addition as well. In essence, what we're doing is, a portion of it on the southeastern perimeter has not been used during that time. We have a redevelopment project by Chris Fair for HIF funding. This is going to be a multifamily project. They're going to remodel an existing apartment complex and also, and also in the existing building next to it. As part of that process, they are, they have worked with the city, and we have agreed that mending this Renaissance Zone to include their project and include this area seems beneficial to the overall community. So we're just recommending that the staff supports this, and this will be coming subsequently to you, probably, probably the first meeting in August for approval.
So we're not to act on this tonight?
No, there's not a need for acting on it. I initially put it on, I wasn't sure, looking through the, looking through the Renaissance Zone requirements, but I wanted you just to be aware of it. It's just additional information for the public. This will also be advertised and be heard, you know, in the next couple of weeks, part of planning commission.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this particular item that you wish to address to Mr. Crotan right now? Okay, well, then you can continue on to the next item.
Next item is a request for a zoning text amendment. Larry Nygaard of Rors Development has proposed a condition to the zoning code to increase the height in the general commercial zoning from 45 feet to 60 feet. City staff has looked at that. City staff would recommend approval of that. To give you some perspective, the industrial district has no height limitation, and the highest residential zone allows 60 feet in height. I've looked at the code in the past, and I feel comfortable with increasing the height for the general commercial zone from 45 to 60. And as part of the comp plan process, maybe we'll also look at, and I'll bring this issue up with the planning commission with respect to maybe increasing the height on the other, other commercial zones as well, but those will be coming in the future. But at this point, city staff recommends approval and hopes the commission will adopt that tonight.
Okay, is this Ordinance 1475?
That's correct.
All right, so this is first reading of Ordinance 1475. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public? Any comments or questions by city commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding first reading of 1475?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
We have the motion and the second to approve first reading. Any other discussion? Here, none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to Item E, which I believe is Mr. Sorens. This is regarding the Dickinson Water Reclamation Facility, also known as the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Mr. Sorens?
Thank you, President Johnson. City Commissioners, on June 21st, we did open bids for a wastewater facility, or the water reclamation facility. We did have five general contractor bids that we opened, along with two electrical contractors and two mechanical contractors. John T. Jones was the general contractor, who was the low bid with a bid of $23,245,123. The low electrical bid was Muth Electric in the amount of $4,521,660. And the low mechanical bid was Williams Heating and Plumbing in the amount of $2,188,000. As part of the bid, we did have an alternate number one that was included on that, which was for the construction of concrete streets throughout the facility in replacement of the asphalt. That bid was $193,000 add-on to the project. The engineers' estimates for this project were at $29,700,000. I think when you add all these together, they come to $29,900,000 approximately. I think it's a little higher than that. So it was a really good bid for us, considering the amount of dollars of project costs. Tonight, we are asking that we award the project to these contractors, and we would also like to ask that we include alternate one as part of the construction project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. Mr. Cohen, would this be three separate motions?
Mr. President, if you're so inclined, I think you can make this with one motion toward the general electrical and mechanical contractor, contracts to the low bidders.
Okay. Well, let's talk about this alternate then. Does anybody have any questions regarding the $193,000 alternate? You know, I think certainly would last a whole lot longer if it's concrete as opposed to asphalt. In your judgment, the length of time that it would last, the $193,000 more than pays for replacement of asphalt and repair of it during the life of the asphalt?
Yes, that would be why we would recommend that. Engineers' estimate on that was 220,000, so it was below what we anticipated the cost to be. Certainly, the service life of concrete is a lot longer than asphalt. Asphalt, you have to go with the chip seals and crack sealing and other maintenance projects in the interim that you don't have to deal with, with concrete. So, we believe it's a much better product, and overall, the cost or the bid that we got, we felt was a very good bid for.
Okay. Does anybody object to including the alternate in our motions to award? And then, you know, reading the memo, the motion really has to, to award has to be contingent upon final approval by the North Dakota Department of Health.
Correct, it's got to be submitted to them for their review as well.
So, our motion could be to award to the three low bidders, and we can name them in our motion, and accept the $193,000 alternate, and the motion of award is contingent upon final approval of the North Dakota Department of Health?
Correct.
Would anybody care to move that motion?
So moved.
Mr. Steiner moves the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have the second. Now, any other discussion you'd like to have? Well, I'd like to congratulate Apex Engineering and our city staff for the job they've done on this project to this point. It's been a project that we have worked on a long time. We've sat through a lot of presentations regarding this. I think it's just remarkable that the bids came in as close to the engineers' estimate as they did. I mean, I, that's outstanding, and I'd like, again, to congratulate our own staff and Apex here. I'm personally very pleased with this bid result. Anybody else here to comment?
Well, I would just echo that. You know, I was asked something to the effect, gee, it was 200 or 300,000 over. Boy, that's less than 1 percent. It really is, it really is amazing. It's really good.
Well, okay. We have the motion and the second. We'll proceed to vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Duquardt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to Item F. And is that yours too, Mr. Soren? Yes, I do.
Yes, I'll take that as well. We do have a development agreement. It's a Profit LP Development Agreement, which is actually for the Timbers First Edition. Timbers First Edition is located on the northwest corner of 21st Street and State Avenue. It is a multifamily residential development. This is a standard development agreement that we've used for several other subdivisions in the past, and we are recommending the commission approve it. The developer's already signed the agreement that's been in front of you.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Soren's introduction and his recommendation. Any questions or comments? Not, is there a motion regarding the approval or disapproval of the development agreement?
I make a motion...
Go ahead, Mrs. Duquardt.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Timbers First Edition.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second, further discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mrs. Duquardt.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And then you have a report here, Plan Review Services Update?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to give you an update. You know, I'd referred back in past meetings that we had a request for proposal for Building Review Services to help us during this time, to allow the public and private side the ability to contract through a private third party that we had reviewed, making sure that they can adequately review per our building code. And we had three proposals submitted for that. All three of them are good. We've, we're in discussions now with Forks Grand Associates to be one of those companies. They are, they are talking to the city, as well as we're talking with the city of Grand Forks to help us with some internal reviews as well. Those, just wanted to give you an update with respect to that. We haven't come to terms relative to the cost of how that would be and the logistics of it, so we're not sure if there will be a private firm, maybe Forks Grand, or the city of Grand Forks to help us with plan reviews to assist us during this effort. We currently have a backlog of about 30 to 40 commercial building permits, and we are, we have one staff that staff position that has not been filled. So, we have a significant increase, as has been noted each month, as part of our building reviews. I've got the June figures here, and they are just astronomical compared to what they were. Just to give you a quick one, we are $100 million over what this time last year. So, we are well ahead of things. We have one less staff member, so it's incredibly difficult for us to hire a very skilled position in today's economy. So we're looking to see if there is a entity such as Grand Forks or a private firm to help assist us with that. So, I will update you whenever we find a firm that seems to have a, seems to have a process in an hourly rate that would work, we would submit that ultimately to the commission for approval. But, we're doing what we could do to address the incredible building activity that we do have.
So, if we're to do this, this is currently a non-budgeted item, we'd have to amend the budget to do it?
Yes, you would have to amend the budget. We'd have to look at, you know, we have an unfilled position, how much that unfilled position costs per month, and then see if this is comparable to that, and see to allocate funds for that, yes.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Any comments, questions at all for the city engineer or the city planner?
I have a question for the city engineer. It doesn't pertain to this particular plan, though. Is it our responsibility, I think it is, to put up signs within city limits? What I'm talking about is no jake breaking between, like on Exit 59 and also on Exit 64, because we're getting complaints, or I am getting complaints from people on 13th Street, that people that are coming on the interstate, they don't realize they're in city limits, and they're jake breaking, and it's very noisy, especially during the night and early morning. You hear it all night long.
Any signs that would be needed on the interstate would be the responsibility of the DOT, and we'd have to get approval of them and get them to install them.
Can you do that?
We can certainly communicate with them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll go to Tab 7. Are there any reports by city commissioners?
I have one more item. We seem to have a, you know, with all the new subdivisions, there are covenants, and most of the subdivisions are putting these covenants on because we request restrictions for them to approve their subdivisions. But, when it comes to applying for a building permit, the city can't enforce those. So I'm wondering if we couldn't have a PUD where the city's aware of those covenants, and we don't have to do a shutdown. We've had a couple homes we've had to shut down because they didn't follow the covenants, and the city can't enforce them.
Mr. President, with respect to Commissioner Duquardt's question, that's always a tough one for jurisdictions everywhere I've been. You know, you want to limit your liability because covenants are very specific, and that's a gentleman's agreement in essence as part of that. You know, I, if it's a direction of the commission, there's different ways to handle it. We could have, you know, as part of any building permit in a certain area, if you wanted to, that you have to have a signature or a letter of approval before we go there. But, if we, if we accept the idea of the covenants, or at least try to generally see if those covenants that we know of are being done as part of submittals, then we're assuming a liability on our side. Planning and developments, in essence, we, you know, depending on your conditions that you attach to that, you may have specific renderings or building types and the rest, and you normally include that within a, within your adopting resolution. As a commission and as staff, we would look at that and go, does it make sense for us to enforce that? Or, the reason that we're approving it is because we want multifamily housing, and we want it to look a specific way, so we are putting a specific condition. But, you know, the idea of addressing covenants and trying to ensure that they are done with the incredible rate of activity that we have, I'm not in favor of that. But, you know, if you want to direct, if you wanted to direct staff that we need to look at that and provide a, you know, a halfway remedy or something, I could come up with ideas and can go from there. But, you know, I do have concerns with the liability that would be attached. We'd be, in essence, transferring the liability from the association to the city. And, you know, I, I understand the issues. There's one thing that could be done. We could just have a check off that they had, that they are aware of the covenants, and that they have the permission for that. But, you know, I would, I would like it to be something that's not, not something that would potentially be a liability with respect to the city. I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner Duquardt, but...
It does. I'm just trying to find a simpler way to do this than to put, stop construction, you know? Or, we could probably have them bring a letter signed that they have been approved by, before they bring it to get their permit, that they have been approved by the developer. Would that help?
Well, we, that would, you know, that could help. It would be more to informational purposes. I don't, you know, in case somebody didn't do that, I wouldn't want it to be a liability on the city's behalf. I mean, we could do our best, and, you know, we could let people know, have you talked to them, because certain associations would be active. The problem you run into is not every HOA is active. I think there's only one or two that probably are. And, do they meet the conditions as part of their covenants and part of state's, state requirements to be considered an active one for that? I know the instance that you have in Panier Canyon, that's, that's always a difficult one to deal with. I've never been in a jurisdiction where we've wanted to somewhat assume on those responsibilities. The only one that I dealt with that we, that we required some kind of a signature was a self-imposed one, where we had a redevelopment area, and we had a, we had a design committee that had to approve that. But that was a quasi-government community to address that issue. So, I am more than happy to discuss that and see if we could come to some kind of a remedy to address that. But at this point, we're probably only looking at one, one subdivision, correct? One or two that probably would be active, that would really enforce any CCNRs.
Right.
Yeah.
But with more and more new contractors coming in, especially, you know, the local contractors, no, but not the out-of-state contractors that are coming in, they're trying to push. You know, they're...
I'm more than happy to sit down with you and try to see if we could come up with a remedy that would not potentially put the city in any kind of liability if it was overlooked.
Okay. That works.
Anything else by commissioners? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commissioner? If so, you can come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public? Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.